My apologies, everyone. We had a little emergency that we had to take care of. So, thank you so much for your patience, students. We're sorry. We know it's a school night, but we're excited about hearing you play. So, at this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for December 7th, 2023, at 7:24. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by our security. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a presentation, and we have a student performance. Ms. Foster?
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz, everyone here tonight, and everyone watching online, we have a very special holiday celebration for you tonight, as you can see by the very, very festive Shackelford Wind Wood- Woodwind Choir. So, welcome them tonight, everybody. Wonderful. The Shackelford Woodwind Choir is made up of eighth-grade students. They're in their second year in the Arlington ISD instrumental band program. The Woodwind Choir is comprised of both flutes and clarinets from Shackelford's top ensemble. Within this ensemble, there are seven students who earned a place in the Arlington ISD All-City Band that's going to perform in January, and two of them earned a spot in the All-Region Band that performed last weekend at the Dr. Marcello Cavasso Center for Visual and Performing Arts. They're under the direction of Ann Klass and Matthew Nagel, and the Woodwind Choir is going to perform two Christmas classics for us tonight. We're going to hear Angels We Have Heard on High and Deck the Halls. But before we kick off that performance, I just want to remind everyone, while we're out on Christmas break, on Arlington ISD's Facebook page, we will have a performance, ten performances from each of our junior highs, including Shackelford's. So, make sure you tune in over the holiday and hear our students. So, with that said, we want you to sit back and enjoy the Christmas stylings of our Shackelford Woodwind Choir.
That was awesome. I can't believe y'all are just junior high. That was so good. If that doesn't get you in the Christmas spirit, I don't know what will. Thank you all so much. It was so good. Can you believe how much talent we have in this district? Junior high, they're amazing, amazing. All right, we'll move on to Presentation B, and that is our Student of the Month, and that's from Bowie High School. Mr. Lee Jones, come on up.
President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board, thank y'all for this opportunity today to get to present AISD Student of the Month from Bowie High School. I can go on and on about this individual, but I won't today, y'all. Sorry. Every morning when this kid walks in, it's like a breath of fresh air. He's going to shake everyone's hand. He's going to tell everyone, "Good morning." He's going to ask you, "How are you doing?" Sometimes I'm like, "Hey, man, there's only two minutes to the bell. Just go ahead and keep going. We'll have our conversation later." But he is that kind of individual who, when everyone sees him, it like makes their day better. We started doing morning announcements this school year, and it has been a while at Bowie High School since we've been doing on a daily basis. And so, I was leading those throughout the year, and I was inside of a classroom doing an observation, and I hear the announcements, and I'm like, "Oh, my goodness. I'm supposed to be doing announcements right now." And it was this student's voice, and I was nervous because I was like, "Oh, my goodness. Are they going to mess up? What are they going to do?" And by the end of that announcement, he said my signature line, which is, "Do something today that makes you smile." And when he said that, I was like, "Oh, my goodness." He just made my life a lot easier. So, I don't worry about announcements anymore. He gets those done just about every morning for me when I'm busy doing something else. Distributive leadership, right, Dr. Wertz? There it is. I had to write down everything that this guy does for Bowie High School. He is very involved, so I didn't want to miss anything. He's part of the Board Advisor for our Army Avid Group. He's in choir, theater. He's the volleyball and basketball manager. He's part of a step team. He's one of our senior officers, and he is our Richard Green Scholar at Bowie High School. One more story before I present him. We had a physical altercation between two males on our campus, and, you know, our goal is always about restoring. That is who we are as a district, and that's who we are as a campus. And a couple of weeks later, a community member came and gave an ESL activity to our Avid Army Group. And when I went to go and talk to that community member, he said, "Yeah, Kyrie Burley invited me to come and talk to them after the altercation to ensure that this doesn't happen again." And I can tell you, with that Army Group, there hasn't been another physical altercation. So, he is a forward thinker. He is someone who is going to make all of us proud, and I am proud today to present Mr. Kyrie Burley as our Student of the Month.
Hi, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, and board members. I appreciate you all for this opportunity and allowing me to be here with you all tonight. I appreciate everyone in- who came to support me tonight. Thank you to my mom, first off, everything she's done over the last 18 years to pour into me and just bring me to this point. And then, also, all Arlington Independent School District teachers who I have met and in this room, who I've met through the Richard Green Program. I appreciate you also, because I would not be in this position that I am today if I wasn't able to meet you all. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, I think you need to be careful. I think he's after your job. Kyrie, we are so proud of you and so proud that you're an AISD student. We cannot wait to see your future and all the great things that you're going to accomplish. And we're so proud that you are a Bowie student and all the lovely things that your principal said about you. We're very, very proud of you. Dr. Wertz and I would like to come down and give you a little gift, if you'll meet us. Well, Kyrie, this is a pin, and I usually wear mine, but I have a Christmas pin on today, but all the trustees wear these. We only give them to very special people, and you're a very special person. So, we are honored to give you this pin and hope that you will wear it and think about AISD in the future when you're doing your great things.
And congratulations. We also have a plaque for you that honors you as our High School Student of the Month. I had actually a personal opportunity to meet with Kyrie back in August with the Richard Green Scholars, and I was very impressed with you then, the questions you were asking, the way you were advocating for the kids in the district and in your school. I'm not surprised you're actually here at all tonight. So, I know we have lots of awesome things to expect from you in the future, and we're going to be watching, so there you go.
We know who you are. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding an agenda item?
We do not for agenda items. We do have speakers for non-agenda items later in the day.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Next, we'll consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals that we discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have a motion to accept the ratifications?
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Ms. Haynes. Please vote. All right, the motion carries.
All right. So, this is one of our opportunities where we get to recognize some new leadership in our district. So, if you hear your name, it'd invite you to stand so we can recognize you as I introduce you. We're going to start off with the new Associate Principal at Lamar High School, Myrna Vasquez. So, Myrna actually started her career, I think, at Mission Consolidated ISD as a Title I parent involvement coordinator, and then she moved to Irving ISD as a bilingual ESL testing coordinator. And then, she's been here in Arlington both as an Assistant Principal and Dean of Instruction. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish from the University of Texas Pan American, and she attended the same university for her Master's in Administration. So, congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize the new Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Ms. Maria Luna. I can see you, but you're on the other side of a pole, so. Maria, as you know, is probably is a familiar face. She's been in our system for some time. She started her career in Birdville ISD as a Spanish teacher at Haltem High School, and then back in 2007, she came to Arlington, and she's been a bilingual teacher at Webb Elementary, an instructional specialist for the World Languages Department. She's been an Assistant Principal at both Webb and Workman Junior High, and now she's moving to Lamar. So, congratulations. She earned her, yes, sorry. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education Spanish at Texas Wesleyan, and then her Master's of Education Administration. So, congratulations, and we're excited to see you at Lamar.
We will now consider approval of the 2024-2025 school calendar. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. So, Action Item A is for the board to consider the 2024-2025 school calendar. As you may recall, this item was brought as a discussion item back in the November 2nd board meeting, and tonight, Mr. Peralos is here again to share any updates and to bring the calendar forward for the board's consideration. Mr. Peralos.
President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board, thank you again for this opportunity to return and share the great work of the 2024-2025 School Calendar Committee. And so, moving forward, I do want to recognize that we had a phenomenal group of community members and internal and external stakeholders that brought their voice to the process. As you can see, we had parents represented, campus staff, campus administration, central office administration, students, teacher organization representation, and also members of our faith-based and our business community. We do have several of our Calendar Committee members that are here this evening. I'd love for them to stand to be recognized for the work that they put in. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your commitment to the process. All right. And so, we remind the board and the community that the charge of the committee was to draft and recommend an academic-focused school calendar for the 2024-2025 school year that emphasizes student outcomes while being aligned with the local and state laws and considers the impact on staff and the greater community. And I want to remind the community that there is also is a strategic plan consideration. There is a 3.3 action piece in our Powered by Possibility Strategic Plan to create a district calendar that prioritizes time to promote social and emotional well-being for all stakeholders. Looking at the scope of the work and the timeline, we were able to share the application opportunity to serve on the committee during the summer break, during June, June 20th through the 30th. We were able to form the committee and start our meetings on August 28th. We had a total of four meetings where we convened and did our work. On October 26th, Dr. Hill had an opportunity to share an update of our work with the Board Governance Committee, and as you mentioned earlier, I was able to give a presentation, update presentation on the 2nd, and we're here this evening on the 7th for consideration. And so, we want to remind our community that there are a couple of calendar rules, laws, and considerations that we use to help drive the work that we accomplish. We want to remind our community that we must produce a calendar that provides 75,600 minutes of operation, plus additional minutes, days to cover two emergency closures, requires 187-day teacher contract. Also, the first day cannot be before the 4th Monday in August. However, we'll remind ourselves that we are a district of innovation, which receives an exception waiver, so that we can start our work a little bit earlier prior to that 4th Monday in August. The last day cannot be prior to May 15th, and as I mentioned earlier, there are strategic plan considerations. We also try our best to create as much balance in the instructional days on each semester. We try to end that semester, the fall semester, before January 1st, and we always take into consideration our educational partners in higher education of UTA and TCC in their calendars. And so, when we got into work during those four meetings, we had a chance to really unpack the great work of the previous Calendar Committee and also bring forward some additional considerations. We talked about the cadence of the start of the school year, which we started in the midweek, and there was a lot of positive affirmation for that process throughout the committee. We also talked about school safety, and we confirmed the 2023-2024 Calendar Committee's thought to have a student-staff away from campus on the election day. We confirmed those election day plans, especially since coming up this fall, there will be a general election, including a presidential election. When we looked at that piece, though, we paused at a little bit of the fluidity of the cadence of that Tuesday and students coming to school on Monday, and then being off on Tuesday prior to a weekend, and so, we took a little bit of a look at that. We tried to end the instructional days before Memorial Day, and then we looked at the opportunity to reduce staff exchange hours, and we looked at reducing from 24 to 18, 12 hours being district exchange hours and six being campus hours. And so, we took all that together, and we were able to produce a draft calendar, which we shared back in November. And just to bring some of the highlights of that calendar, it includes seven teacher-staff preparation and staff development days. The first day of school for students will be on August 14th, which is that midweek start that we get to continue with. We have a student holiday. Now, going into that election day process that I just talked about, on the 4th, that Monday, we're able to embed a student-staff holiday, and then the 5th, the election day, becomes a student holiday and staff exchange day. And so, you're looking at a four-day extended weekend opportunity for families and staff. We continue with our one week for Thanksgiving holiday, which we just got to enjoy, and then two weeks for winter break, which we're about to enjoy. On the turnaround for winter break, we have a staff professional learning day embedded on January 7th. The first day of the spring semester for students will actually be on January 8th, which goes back to midweek start in the spring. So, we'll have a midweek and a midweek for each semester. The last day of instruction is on May 23rd. There's also two staff preparation days embedded as well, so they can work in their classrooms, getting things ready for students in January and May. We have staff development exchange days in May. We've produced a calendar with 187-day teacher contract, 174 instructional days, which meets 76,610 operational minutes. And then, we also embedded that Juneteenth holiday on June 19th. We realized that regular school session is out, you know, would be out in May, but we do have summer learning going on and staff working, and so, we wanted to acknowledge that Juneteenth holiday. And then, remind the community that our students that are involved in early collegiate high school and early college and career high school follow our TCC calendar or take the TCC calendar into consideration. And so, the Calendar Committee would like to recommend that the board approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented, and I'll pause for any questions and/or discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Peralos. Do I have any trustees with comments or questions? I want to thank you so much for, thank you and your committee members. I looked at how many times you've met and all the hours that I know go into this, and we really appreciate your time and your consideration to get everything just right in this calendar, and I think you have. And I know teachers are appreciative of that midweek start. Nobody wants to start a semester on a Monday, right? So, that starting on a Wednesday is very good, and I know they appreciate that. Thank you so much, Mr. Peralos, and at this time, we'll take a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I have a motion by Ms. Haynes and a second by Ms. Richardson. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much, trustees. I appreciate it. We now move to Action Item B, Consider Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for the interim Chair Appointment. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, the board has an opportunity this evening to appoint or consider an interim CBOC chair.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Are there any trustees with questions or discussion? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. The Community Engagement Committee oversees the Financial Futures Committee, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and several other citizen committees, and a situation has arisen in which the charter of our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee does not address a situation where if we need a vice chair or another person to step in his chair, and so, we're bringing this to the board for the appointment of an interim chair. Our current chair, Charles Finnicum, I think it's pretty well-known in the community at this point, has unfortunately suffered a series of health setbacks and is just unable to serve at this time. And so, pending his, what we're hopeful is a recovery, there's a proposal by the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to bring back the longtime chair of our Bond Oversight Committee's Will DeKine.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I have a motion to accept the interim chair appointment? Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler. And before I make the motion, I just want to thank Mr. Chapa for his remarks, and I know that I speak on behalf of the board when I send well wishes and prayers to Mr. Finnicum and his family during this time. So, I move to appoint Mr. Will DeKine as interim chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. I have a motion from Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, Mr. Will Banks, you have it. I have a second for Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. And we have, the motion carries with all seven voting. Thank you very much. Let me call on Mr. DeKine. Would you like to say anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. DeKine, and thank you so much for agreeing to step in and chair the committee while Mr. Finnicum is unable, so we appreciate you stepping back in. I know when you were chair for many years, you did a fantastic job as chair, so we know that you'll carry on with that leadership. Thank you so much for agreeing to do this. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, do I have any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a motion from Dr. Raish and a second by Ms. Richardson. Please vote. school and early college and career high school follow our TCC calendar or take the TCC calendar into consideration. And so the calendar committee would like to recommend that the board approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented, and I'll pause for any questions and/or discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Prowlles. Do I have any trustees with comments or questions?
It's good.
It's good. I want to thank you so much for, thank you and your committee members. I looked at how many times you've met and all the hours that I know go into this, and we really appreciate your time and your consideration to get everything just right in this calendar, and I think you have. And I know teachers are appreciative of that midweek start. Nobody wants to start a semester on a Monday, right? So that starting on a Wednesday is very good, and I know they appreciate that. Thank you so much, Mr. Prowlles, and at this time, we'll take a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I have a motion by Ms. Haynes and a second by Ms. Richardson. Motion carries. Thank you very much, trustees. I appreciate it. We now move to action item B, Consider Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for the interim chair appointment. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, the board has an opportunity this evening to appoint or consider an interim CBOC chair.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Are there any trustees with questions or discussion? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. The Community Engagement Committee oversees the Financial Futures Committee, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and several other citizen committees. And a situation has arisen in which the charter of our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee does not address a situation where if we need a vice chair or another person to step in his chair, and so we're bringing this to the board for the appointment of an interim chair. Our current chair, Charles Finnicum, I think it's pretty well-known in the community at this point, has unfortunately suffered a series of health setbacks and is just unable to serve at this time. And so pending his, what we're hopeful is a recovery. There's a proposal by the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to bring back the longtime chair of our bond oversight committees, Will DeKine.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I have a motion to accept the interim chair appointment? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. Before I make the motion, I just want to thank Mr. Chapa for his remarks, and I know that I speak on behalf of the board when I send well wishes and prayers to Mr. Finnicum and his family during this time. So I move to appoint Mr. Will DeKine as interim chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Mr. Will Banks, you have it. I have a second for Mr. Will Banks. And we have, the motion carries with all seven voting. Thank you very much. Let me call on Mr. DeKine. Would you like to say anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. DeKine, and thank you so much for agreeing to step in and chair the committee while Mr. Finnicum is unable, so we appreciate you stepping back in. I know when you were chair for many years, you did a fantastic job as chair, so we know that you'll carry on with that leadership. Thank you so much for agreeing to do this. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, do I have any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a motion from Dr. Raish and a second by Ms. Richardson. Please vote. Motion carries for the consent agenda. Thank you so much. We now move on to discussion item two. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Each year, we set goals, or the board sets goals, and we work to achieve those goals, and we have a calendar that was adopted where we report out on our progress for the district improvement plan and those that are related to House Bill 3. And this evening, we have Dr. Lopez here to share our results from our first assessment, our first curriculum assessment that is just recently completed. Dr. Lopez?
President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz, thank you so much for your time. I'll jump right into it because that was a perfect introduction, House Bill 3 and the dip goal progress update based on our first curriculum assessment. So House Bill 3 is divided into two sections. You all know we have a reading section and then a math section, so I'll cover all the reading areas that we have selected however many board meetings ago for the grade levels that we're keeping an eye on, kind of the dipsticks along the way that we want to make sure that we're monitoring, although, of course, we monitor all grade levels, but the ones that we report out on are just, it's not the full load. So, and then I'll move into the math section before going into the district improvement plan portion. And so the layout looks slightly different than what we've seen in the past because we had updated the goals to include not just the approaching grade level, but approaches, meets, and masters. So before, it was just the one set of bar graphs, but now we have the three sections. We tried to, you know, put, block them out with the colors. So you'll, the first navy section is the approaches section, and then that teal color is meets, and then that pink coral-ish color is masters, and that's consistent on every slide. And so the goals for third grade reading for approaches to increase the percentage of our third grade students who are approaching grade level from 65 to 68. And then for the meets level to increase from 38 to 42. For masters, we would like to go from 11 to 14. And so you can see the performance of our third grade kiddos on CA1, and it's the last bar in each of the sections, and it has the highlighting around it. So that highlighted yellow is where would we like to be by 2024, May of 2024, on our third grade reading assessment. And so the goal is to go from 65 to 68 at the approaches grade level. And so what you can see from that first bar graph for CA1, we reached 66%. So a little bit of growth there, and still, I mean, we're about, what, eight to 10 weeks in, and so like to see continued improvement to achieve the other 2% to get to the goal for the STAR test. And then for moving over to that teal section, so for STAR 2023, we had 38%. We want to increase to 42, and we did have a slight dip on our CA1 for our students that were meeting grade level. So we dropped to 35% there and would like to see the grade level get to 42%. So definitely going to need some work there. And then finally, masters, we'd like to go from 11 to 14, and we had a slight drop for 10% on CA1, so a slight drop from what we did on the STAR test in 2023. And then so for our kiddos, for third grade, this is kind of their first attempt at a curriculum assessment in Polaris with the way that the STAR, we, our Polaris Edutins platform mirrors what the STAR platform, the Cambian platform, looks like, but there is a slight learning curve of going from their screener to the TEACs-based assessment. So moving into the breakdown of approaches, meets, and masters by each of the subgroups, the demographic categories. So you'll see the first section of blue is the STAR performance. The second section, which has the first navy box around it, that is the percentages based on our curriculum assessment. We have another major curriculum assessment in the second semester, late February, early March, and that's our benchmark, and that section's grayed out. And then you see the goals in the second outlined blue section. So the colors in the first navy blue section will show you if they have, if that subgroup at that performance level have reached the goal that they need to reach by 2024, May of 2024, on the actual STAR test. It'll be green. If they're within 5% of that goal, the box will be yellow. And then if they're more than 5% below what they need to be in May, then the box is that light pink color. So you would like to see, obviously, you want to see green, but it's very early, and so there will be progress. So that's how the breakdown of this slide will be for the rest of the grade levels. Pay attention, just kind of giving it away a little bit here, but pay attention to our sped-current section on each of the grade levels. That's certainly one that caught our eye as we were looking through the data and analyzing, and our sped-current subgroup is doing well, and they are either within 5% or meeting the goal that they should meet by the end of the year. And we know it is early, so like we need to continue whatever growth we are accomplishing with our students, but it's a victory, and we like to recognize where there's been improvement. So I'm going to move into eighth grade reading. Again, it's broken out, approaches, meets, and masters in the same layout, so navy still approaches, coral still meets, and then the teal still masters, so I'll speed up just a little bit. So the goal here was to go from 75 to 76 in approaches, from 46 to 47 in meets, and then from 20 to 21 in masters. So our performance for our eighth grade reading was strong on STAR 2023, and so you'll notice the increases aren't as large that we were expecting. And so for our CA1, we maintain that 75% at approaches, so still need to grow 1% on STAR in 2024. We dropped slightly, 2% in the meets category, and then, but our masters percentage increased by 5%. So kind of a little bit of a drop in meets and a little bit, kind of actually a big growth in masters for our eighth grade kiddos. And then this is the breakdown by performance level and then subgroup. A little bit more green, these kids are used to the platform and kind of used to CA's, and so that might have something to do with it. Going to move into STAR EOC, and we monitor both English 1 and English 2. And so for high school English 1, the goal is to increase 71 to 72% at approaches, 53 to 54 at meets, and then 12 to 14% at masters. So again, strong, strong performance on STAR 2023 even with the redesign, and so not as much growth as we're expecting from some of our younger grade levels, but, and we did have a drop on CA1 in our, in approaches, we dropped a little bit, 69%. So we still are needing to grow to 72, and then just a slight dip in meets, and then a slight uptick in masters. And then for our breakdown by performance level and subgroup, you can still see quite a bit of green, quite a bit of yellow, and then again, looking at our, the sped-current in particular, green and yellow on that subgroup, so that's great, and also the sped-former. And then finishing up reading with high school English 2, so wanting to increase approaches grade level 75 to 76, maintaining the meets level for this particular subject, just maintaining that 56%, and then increasing from 9 to 11% at the masters. So we had a slight drop at approaches down to 73, still need to gain 3%, that's doable. Had an increase in meets from 56 to 57, and then slight drop, 9 to 8% in masters. And then the breakout by performance level and subgroup, again, looking down at the bottom portion, it's nice to see that much green. All right, and then so going to move now into the House Bill 3, the math portion, same grades, third, eighth, and then the high school. So third grade math, need to make some maybe more aggressive gains with math, but we know that, that's a trend across the state. And so our goal was to increase approaches from 62 to 66%, meets 33 to 35%, and then masters 12 to 13%. With our third grade math kiddos, we had a drop from 62 to 60, so still needing to get to 66%. A drop in meets from 33 to 31, and then a slight drop in masters, 12 to 11. So a little bit more of the yellow and the pink shading for third grade math for subgroups by performance level. Moving into eighth grade math, we're looking to increase the percentage from 65 to 69 at approaches, 28 to 31% meets, and then 7 to 8% masters. And had a slight increase at approaches, up 1% from 65 to 66, and then a drop at meets from 28 to 26, and then slight increase at masters, 7 to 8. You'll recall, our eighth grade math results in 2021 were extremely low, and that was seen across the state. I believe that it was like 39% approaching grade level in 2021. So to be, to be back up to 65% and then to be maintaining that on our CA's is good, and just, you know, also something to recognize, like obviously still room to grow, but those kiddos are, and those teachers are working very hard. And this is the break, the breakdown by performance level and demographic group. I love that the sped-current is green all the way across. And then finally, the last math test is our high school algebra 1. There isn't another in high school. And so the goal there, go from approaches 77 to 78, 38 to 43 for meets, and then 17 to 19 for masters. And so met the approaches goal, so went from 77 to 78 on our way with meets, 38 to 41, and then maintaining at masters, so. And this one didn't have any pink at all, just a green and yellow for the subgroups by performance level there. And then the same results for these, the curriculum assessment are used to determine where are we at in our district improvement plan for the academic portion of the district improvement plan. So the update there is also related to the results on the curriculum assessment. So the first performance objective for goal one, which, again, that's academics in our district improvement plan, is an overall district reading goal. So this is going to include all of our grade level tests, third through 12th grade, so anybody that, you know, sometimes we have kiddos that they don't finish English 2 in 10th grade and they retake maybe in 11th and 12th, and so anybody that took a CA all the way through 12th grade, or excuse me, all the way through English 2 will be included. And a goal there, our goals are to increase from 71 to 73 at approaches, 46 to 48 at meets, and then 15 to 16 at masters. With all of the tests being included, it is pushing it to say that with, you know, 30,000 tests, we want to increase by 2%. So we're on our way. Approaches, we maintained at 71, slight drop by 1% at the meets level, and then maintained our masters from what we did last year. So we have plenty of time to reach the goal of what we need to be at by the end of the year. And then this is the breakout by subgroup, so most seem to be either right there or within 5% most. And then moving into the overall district math, the second performance objective and our first goal, which is academics, is to increase approaches from 67 to 70, meets from 35 to 39, and then masters from 13 to 15. Similar trend where we're just, we're maintaining at the approaches grade level from what we did on STAR last year, so 67, staying at 67. We have a slight drop in meets from 35 to 33, and then also a drop in masters, 13 to 12%. So a little bit more pink on this by subgroup and by performance level. Moving into the third performance objective underneath the academic goal, and this is related to our college career and military readiness, that goal is related only to our 12th grade students, so it is to increase their CCMR point acquisition from 78 to 85%. So we ended the school year, our 12th graders last year, at 78%. Our current seniors are sitting right at 69%, so underneath the goal of 85. This is, this is fantastic. We actually mentioned this in senior staff, and Dr. McDonald knew at this point in time in November where we were at, and I believe it was 37%, and then sent me the breakdown by campus. So definitely something that the secondary are monitoring. And so 69 is over 30% of where we were at, at this time last year with our senior class. Second goal is related to attendance, so not directly related to academics, but one of those indirect variables that would influence. And the first performance objective there was that all AISD students will increase their attendance rate from 92.6 to 94% during this current school year, and we're right there at 94%. The data was pulled on November 30th for this, so it's not like at the end of a six-week. It was as close to the deadline for turning in this presentation as I could get, so. And then finally, our first performance objective under our third goal is related to discipline, again, not directly academic, but related there. So we're looking to decrease the rate of disciplinary recidivism of our Level 1 and 2 incidents from 45 to 35, and right now, we are at 39%. And that is the end of the update. Are there any questions?
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Ms. Richardson?
Thank you for your presentation. And can we go back and look at slide, basically, we started on slide three.
Okay.
When we are looking at, let him catch up. Okay, eighth grade reading, CA1. When I'm looking at these scores, and it shows that we are going to go from 75% to 76, 46 to 47, 20 to 21, and if we keep on looking at this trend of these 1% gains that we're hoping for, why are we not, one, expecting more out of these growth patterns? Because we know our students are smart, and we know our teachers are capable. Why are, why is there such low growth expected on each of, and it goes, high school English 1, CA1, is the same thing, high school English 2, all of them are only a 1% increase. Why are we expecting so little?
So the three and five-year models, or I believe the 21 to 26, the five-year growth goals were created to get us back to pre-COVID values of 2019. And so that was just a consistent approach, that wherever we landed on the first administration of 2019 tests is where we, that's how long we thought it would take, about five years, to get back to where we were in 2019, pre-COVID, come back from the learning loss. And so you can see just, just two years ago, we were at 67%, and then made this massive leap of 11%. We didn't, we didn't want to be too aggressive when we originally created the goals to push pressure on to teachers and students to accomplish on this end-of-the-year test. We just wanted, yes, we wanted to get back to pre-COVID values, but also not to only focus solely on the result on the STAR test at the end of the year. I mean, there was also, I think, some, you know, certainly social, emotional aspects that we needed to keep in mind. And so the goals were just, decided that the endpoint would be what we did in 2019 before COVID occurred.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You'll also find that the rate of those percentages will vary from year to year. So when we think about the adopted five-year goals, some years, you'll find that there's a couple of percentage points, two or three, and other years, there's one, but the target is that by the time you get to the fifth year, you paste it in a way that you can actually get there. So while there might be only 1% in the adopted goal this year, you might find like next year, that that number may be different, and it's based upon where you land and the pace at which we were trying to go through.
It is frustrating to see that we have, we know that ESAR is ending at the end of this coming year, and that we're going to lose those funds and those support to get us just back to where we were in 2019. Not even to say that we have gained more success, that our students are doing even better, but to know that we're not even going to have those same, same things in place to be able to help our students. And then to see just how long it really is taking, five years, to be able to get our students back, and that is sad to me. And I know as a district, you will keep helping us grow. I know, Dr. Buell, you guys are keeping your eyes on what can we do to not only increase it, but to also make it most effective for the teachers and the students. So thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Lopez. My question was also...
My question was also about reading. So really quickly, just thinking about our district-created CAs. So this was the first curriculum assessment of the year. So I would understand if the answer is no, but did third grade, eighth grade, and then high school English see an extended constructed response on this assessment? Or was it just the multiple choice and new item types?
Yes, they had they had both short and extended. Whatever they mirror whatever the STAR test would be at the end of the year.
So the data that we're seeing, does that capture a scored ECR? And then teachers input that data and everything was put in cumulatively?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and I want to take back a verb I used. I said mirror. They do not mirror, I apologize. It is a condensed version.
Yes.
So it's it's not the full-length test that they'll take at the end of the year. If the STAR test at the end of the year typically has thirty-three questions, CA might have twenty to twenty-five, but it proportionally should cover what it seems to be.
And I appreciate that because, you know, up until CA one, I think that that's the purpose of this test is to give the teachers the data point they need to drive their instruction based on what they've already taught. I don't think it would be best for kids to give a cumulative assessment and then, you know, hold students or teachers accountable for that. So I respect that. I am glad, though, that the ECR is being incorporated because teachers need that data point as well. And I'm I'm happy, especially for our third graders, that they could get that exposure to get on the platform and write. And so that when they take a STAR assessment, you know, navigating the test and having that exposure isn't going to hinder their performance.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my only question, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrough. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler and Dr. Lopez. As always, appreciate the information and the the deep dive. I'm curious, I know that this is the first CA with the redesign. So I don't expect that you have a confidence threshold on either whether we CA one or the one that we'll do as a second on what that percent equates to to the STAR test. Historically, can you tell me what that looked like? If we had, say, forty-four percent on the CA one, what was the likely outcome on that STAR test for that year? Was it forty-four? Was it lower, higher? And I know that's very vague, but.
No, I understand. And so we we had run correlation analysis on CA one and CA two and benchmark in the past. Without having the data for the redesign, we didn't correlate back to two thousand and twenty-two. So that's a next step in the process would be in two thousand and twenty-four.
Sure.
How how accurately did we predict the student's performance level based on our own internal equating?
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
Well, that's that's my expectation, for sure. I was just also curious, historically, how how have we measured up on that correlation in the past?
So the correlations have been strong, so point eight, anywhere ranging from point seven, usually around with our first CA up to point eight, point nine for some tests because we do it by subject. But again, that's just a correlation of the student performance on one to the other, like side by side. So that's not necessarily categorical. That's just looking at the relationship between the the way that the the lines are falling, basically.
Yeah.
So the strength of the relationship between the x-axis and the y-axis. So I can't remember the specific values, but we can certainly provide that. I just don't know it right here off the top of my head. But the correlations were strong in the past between just.
In essence, I I mean, which I think you believe you're asking is, is there is there predictive value in the tests that they're taking in terms of the the outcome at the end of the year? Like if with the scores they're getting now, is there some sort of level predictive value about what will be in the end of the year?
So, yes, and I don't expect that, just like what Dr. Lopez said, to actually exist just yet. I I guess what I was getting at as a point is I'm pretty sure that it was strong. And with all of the high-level thoughtful approach that goes into this, I have no reason to believe that this isn't going to be any different going forward, even though we're in a new a new era. So I just I just wanted to say thank you for everything that that you all do in trying to get us there, get our students there and our our teachers the the information so that they can really move those those needles as much as possible. It'll, of course, we'll we'll see with this next round of STAR to, as you said, twenty-four moving forward, what that predictive value is. But I have every bit of confidence because you all, from an academic standpoint, have such a thoughtful analytical approach on this. And I really do see it, looking at other other districts and presentations from the governance level, I just don't see that that level, high-level thought. You're giving us the high level, but all the granularity that goes into this behind the scenes that's embedded underneath this. Looking at other districts, I I'm just proud for you and proud of Arlington ISD and what you guys are doing. So I'm I'm excited that we're going to see some good things. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Any any other comments? Seeing none, Dr. Lopez, thank you to you and your team. Hours and hours and hours of work goes in to giving us these results. And we know how hard our teachers and our students are working. And sometimes numbers don't always reflect all that's going into that. But we know that we're on a trajectory to go upwards and to do better. And so thank you so much for bringing this to our attention tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We now move to discussion B, Advanced Academic Update. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. As you may recall, several years ago, we completely redesigned our Gifted and Talented program and added different elements to our advanced academics programming for students. And so this evening, we thought it was time to provide the board with an update on how that's looking and the impact that that's had. And so we've invited Dr. Buell and Dr. Karen Zeskey, our Director of Advanced Academics here this evening, to go over that with you and to share with you some of those outcomes.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board. I'd like to first welcome Dr. Zeskey up. She's going to provide our presentation this evening. But I'd also like to acknowledge Dr. Tamila Horton for her leadership in that department and the hard work also of Amy Gresham. They really do a lot to promote the advanced academics within Arlington ISD, which we're so proud of. Dr. Zeskey?
Thank you, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, board members. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to visit with you this evening and talk about the work of the advanced academics programs in Arlington ISD. The presentation in particular gives a comprehensive overview of our gifted and talented services, especially since the redesign, and the an update on the other advanced academics programs that we support, in particular AP, IB, Onramps, and Avid. Our goals for our gifted and talented program in Arlington ISD, based upon the state plan, are to promote increased student achievement by enhancing the quality of learning experiences for the gifted and talented student, to sustain a comprehensive system for the referral and identification of gifted and talented students across all grade level bands, and to implement gifted and talented services that meet the state exemplary standards. All of our decisions and programming are based on the Texas State Plan. The last time there was a redesign was in two thousand and nineteen, and they added a section on fidelity of services and also included references to the socially emotional elements of the gifted learner, inclusion of an advisory committee focusing on supporting twice-exceptional students. They are set for a five-year review in the coming spring. So TEA will be conducting that review and we will adjust accordingly. There are some myths about gifted programming, such as it's elitist or it's only helping certain students. But we know that the sooner that we support gifted learners, we identify them and serve them with appropriate services, the better their chances are for maximizing their potential. And that's what we do in in Arlington ISD. Our identification strategy is to increase the identification of GT students at younger grade levels. The sooner they receive services, the better their chances are of maximizing their potential. So we give universal screeners in grades K, in grades K two and four. We also annually provide an all-call for referrals during the second six weeks of the year. And we hold family GT informational sessions on each elementary campus. All kindergarten students are screened in the fall using planned learning experiences that are scored with a rubric. After that scoring is complete, the top twenty percent are identified for further screening using observation checklist, the negligee, and portfolio work. Identification process in first through third grade uses a second-grade universal screener, and it is completed in the spring. Fourth through sixth grade uses a fourth-grade universal screener and then is completed in the fall semester. The screening includes both qualitative and quantitative criteria that a campus placement committee, all GT-trained, will use to decide on inclusion in the program. All secondary students can be referred once per calendar year at any time during the school year. The hard work over the last few years since the redesign has significantly increased the numbers of students who have been identified. So you can see a ten-year improvement on the numbers of students that are not only identified but also receiving services since the redesign. And this is our district-wide GT data from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And you can see the grade bands for high school, junior high, and elementary. This is the same information in pictorial format. And we're very, very proud of our growth in the demographic comparison. It's presented here. All of our areas of identification have improved. The inclusion of students in gifted programming across the board. In the world of gifted, if students are identified at the eighty percent mark and match the district demographics at eighty percent, it's considered an approachable program where we include all students. And we meet that in all areas but one in the numbers presented here. And we are closing the gap in the last area. That is a big celebration over what has occurred the last few years. And this is just the the last year's specific numbers for that same amount of information. Our GT students are participating in advanced courses at a very high level. And you can see that it says AP for junior high, that would only be AP Spanish, that's all that's available at the junior high. But they're also participating in CTE and advanced courses. So courses that are taught with some advanced elements in math, science, English, and social studies at the junior high level. And here are some specific numbers by campus for participation in each of those courses. We have the same set of data here for high school students, for AP, CTE, dual credit, IB, and then again, advanced courses. And advanced courses at high school are those courses that they take that lead up to and prepare them for AP and IB courses. And then the same breakdown here for our high school campuses. Students have many choices about their serving and how they're going to be served, especially in the high school realm for the gifted learners. And you can see all the choices that are available to them. Once students are identified and participating in our program, we work really hard to make sure the GT lead teacher is trained. And there is specific curriculum that the teacher uses to help our students move forward in their learning. In the elementary in particular, we use a cluster grouping model. And that is where basically the GT-identified students are strategically placed together within a mixed ability classroom so that they have the opportunity to work with other gifted students. And that allows for full-time services for gifted students. This is a widely researched recommended strategy for inclusion in the in the regular classroom for the gifted students to have their services met. The dynamics in particular of that cluster grouping is to have seven to ten identified GT students, including our bilingual students. If we don't quite have that minimum size, then all the students are grouped together. If you have more than that and you have to break them up into two groups, we ask that they be split into two equal groups. And that that daily teacher, the teacher of record that's with the students all day, is GT-trained. Each elementary campus has a GT lead teacher. And that teacher does have specific curriculum that he or she teaches in a pull-out model for two hours a week. That GT lead teacher also pushes into the classroom to help the teacher of record differentiate and again, for the students to meet their maximum growing in within the regular classroom. They have several other responsibilities. They do some co-teaching, they do the pull-out, as mentioned previously. They facilitate identification in the screening process. They're also involved in extracurricular support like UIL, Spelling Bee, et cetera. The specific curriculum support for the elementary GT student includes literature circles in grades two through six using Ranzilli Learning, which is an online differentiation tool specifically for research, using King Gore Planned Learning Experiences and Advanced Math Enrichment in grades three through six. The differentiation that happens supports also creativity and the creation of innovative products and performances for our students. And all of that is supported by professional learning, both for the classroom teacher and the GT lead teacher. That professional learning includes thirty hours of GT training when they first begin serving gifted learners and a six-hour update after that. Last summer for Summer Impact, the Gifted and Talented team provided one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five slots for people to get that GT update. And they have an additional one thousand fifty slots for the fall to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to get that training to better support our students. Lastly, the supports for elementary GT lead teachers include support with lesson planning, modeling the use of depth and complexity for higher-level learning, and really working with data determining growth and instructional focuses for our gifted learners, and supporting authentic portfolio pieces for progress monitoring and referral documentation. And here we see the results of some of those curricular elements that we had talked about. We have several pieces of data that show that our GT students are meeting the standards of STAR and EOC. They the students here are shown, the GT students here are shown in the red bar. And we can see that they're being very successful in the meets category and the masters category for mathematics. And the same thing for reading meets and reading masters. Science, similarly, meets and masters. And lastly, social studies, meets and masters as well. The second part of the presentation talks about other ways we serve gifted learners, especially in the secondary setting. And that is through advanced placement sponsored by the College Board, IB, Onramps, and using Avid to support success in all of those areas. Advanced placement is sponsored by the College Board and gives students a chance to work on college-level work and earn college credit through exams given each May. We have math, science, English, social studies, computer science, and foreign language and art on all of our comprehensive high school campuses. And several junior highs have AP Spanish. Here are here's an example of our enrollment and demographics in AP currently for the for the past, for the May twenty-three administration. And here is our list of percentages of students by high school of who is participating in AP. International Baccalaureate is a rigorous academic program that emphasizes student initiative and independent study. And they too can earn college credit through exams that are given in May. IB focuses on both challenging academics and developing a global perspective of the world. The participation at high school begins in junior year. And we have it currently at four high schools. And you can see who is included in that program here, both as a whole and then by individual campus. University of Texas Onramps is a relatively new offering in the last few years. Students get to take are able to take dual-credit courses through UT and receive college credit for those courses. We currently are offering courses in science and mathematics on most campuses. They are both enrolled in a high school course led by a high school teacher and then being taught. taught through an online program by a UT professor. And they also provide ample professional development. These teachers go to training for like two weeks every summer to get to teach this program. So they're very well-prepared and ready to help our students be successful. This is a much smaller program in numbers, as you can see, 240 students so far, and this is how it breaks down by our high school campuses. Lastly, we have Avid, Advancement via Individual Determination. Avid's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing students for college readiness and success in a global society. Its goal is to help students be four-year college-ready, and it creates a system within the course itself and across the campus to help students be eligible and successful when they reach there. They use the WICER program, Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization and Reading, to build that student learning and performance so that they can be successful in the advanced courses that we just talked about in the previous three instances. They do receive elective credit for that course, and it does help them in their advanced courses. And you can see, we have here a large number, 3,597 students that are involved in Avid, and it reaches the spectrum of our students. And here's the breakdown by campus in particular. And here's our junior high breakdown as well. It is a seven-through-12 program. We have many celebrations in the advanced academics arena. For example, our GT students are using their creativity to reach out to people like Mayor Ross and say, "We've got some plans to help students cross Cooper Street in a safe way." And so we highlight their ability to be able to see problems and seek solutions, and then reach out to try to make those solutions come to fruition. The College Board recognized hundreds of AP scholars after the May administration, 372 AP scholars, 124 scholars with distinction, and 95 scholars with awards, with honors this past May. Nine students received an AP Seminar Research Certificate. Avid seniors earned over $28 million in scholarships. We also have three demonstration schools. We have Bowie High School, Lamar High School, and Carter Junior High are all Avid demonstration schools. Our areas of focus for this year and following is creating an annual advisory committee and update our input from that committee, mentoring and social and emotional support specifically for junior high and high school students, working on our advanced products and performances in junior high and high school, continuing to provide supports for students in AP, IB, and On-Ramps coursework through Avid and other supports. We believe that we have an open enrollment policy for our advanced courses. Students who are willing to try these courses are welcome to come and be a part of those programs, and we are providing supports for their success. And lastly, utilizing depth and complexity for differentiation and scaffolding support for students in all of these advanced courses. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. Zeski. Do we have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Zeski, I appreciate the presentation. I grew up in this district and participated in what I guess would have been considered GT programming back in the day, and it's so much different than what we have now. I think I got a great education here, had great opportunities, but we have so much more now. And just, I had a couple of questions. One question is, I was not prompted to ask this, but can you give me some more information on what it entails to be an Avid demonstration school?
Absolutely. To be an Avid demonstration school, that means that you are following all of the requirements of what Avid asks you to follow, and you are so good at doing that that other people come in to see what you're doing. And it's a very rigorous process. You need to make sure that you can go into any classroom, for example, and see Avid's strategies used in all classrooms, not just Avid classrooms, but to be able to go into an English classroom, in a social studies classroom, et cetera, because the Avid approach is that you are school-wide with all of these strategies. And so when you look at those WICER strategies, they make sense, that all students would benefit from that. So even though there might be a class where you're helping a student because you're explaining to them the college knowledge they need to be successful, how to apply to college, how to apply for scholarships, what FAFSA is all about, and all those kinds of things, you're also having tutorials twice a week where they have adults or college students come in and help them with this very advanced work that they're doing. And so what it means if you are a demonstration school is somebody has come out, come in from Avid and said, "You are doing this right." And so we have three demonstration schools for Avid.
That's great, and I'm glad to see that. We've invested a lot as a district into the Avid program, but I think it's one of those things that you really see the dividends of. And I also like that it's actually included in a presentation on advanced academics, or what some people would say GT, because I feel like for a long time, Avid sort of had this reputation of, well, Avid is the program for students who, they might be on the bubble, or maybe they just need some help, and we're going to put them in Avid and hope that that gets them college-ready. And there's certainly lots of kids that fall into that category of Avid's the thing that gets them more college-ready. But my experience has been that some students that would, you know, otherwise you would think would be just fine in GT programming, really benefit from being in Avid because it teaches them skills that they need for college that, despite their apparent success based on grades, there's a soft spot there that when they get to college, if they don't have certain skills, they might struggle, and Avid identifies that and helps them get there. Been very pleased with my own kids' experience in Avid at the junior high level, and just very highly recommend it, and glad to see that we're doing there. Sort of the flip side of that is, as much as we're investing in Avid, I had a question about the IB program, and I remember several years ago, that was sort of the new thing we were doing, and we had, I know at Sam Houston, at one point, we had, I think, over or close to 100 students in IB, and the numbers seem to have dropped off over the years. Is, you know, I'll be upfront, I mean, as we're going into a situation where, over the next few years, we're going to be taking a hard look at programming because of the financial situation we've been put in by the state, I remember when I first got involved in AISD committees back in 2011, the year that the state cut pretty much a quarter of the education budget, one of the things that we had to do as a citizen committee is work with a consultant and go through and sort of give them their opinion on what low enrollment classes would we be okay with the district getting rid of. And so the numbers that I'm seeing here are, that kind of takes me back to that time period of the enrollment is so low, you know, what sort of investment are we putting in into the IB program, and what's the case to continue IB going forward? I certainly see it, I mean, at Arlington High, I think there's a strong case to be made, but, I mean, having two diploma candidates at, you know, how many kids are at Lamar, like 2,700? I mean, that's sort of a, to me, I have questions as a trustee, is it the best place to park our investments?
I do, I hear your question is, basically, is there a chance to increase these numbers? I think we have a challenge because we have many choices for our students, and I think when IB started, we didn't have as many choices at the high school level, and part of the challenge for IB is that they don't start the program until they're juniors, and so many of them are already on a trajectory once they get to that point. And so I do think we have some very, very successful places, but you must have diploma candidates to continue with IB.
Yeah. So what is the, is there a strategy to try to do that, or what's the selling point to get folks interested in IB over the other opportunities? And a sort of related question is, is how does IB play into our CCMR? I mean, do you have to get the diploma for it to really help us, or is just taking an IB class going to help us there?
Just earning a four, five, or six on one of the IB exams is how it plays into CCMR.
Okay. All right. So what would you say is like a selling point for IB versus the other opportunities that we have?
If I were, as I talked to parents at our, you know, opportunity earlier this fall with all the specialized programming, what is wonderful about IB is it really does help students have a global view of their learning, of their experiences. There is a service element involved. They write extended, they write extensively over a long term. AP doesn't do that. AP is about writing a paper for one particular test and one particular prompt. They have CAST in IB. There are all these elements that help you be, I think, a more global and well-rounded student. We have some challenges for students choosing it because it also has required courses you must take to get the diploma. And so we have some other things like athletics and fine arts that take more periods than the students have, you know, to be able to complete all the elements. And so it's a wonderful program. I think we have some structural challenges for the numbers to be as great, and I think our students have choices. And again, if you aren't really making commitment to IB until junior year, many times you're already on a certain pathway, and it's very difficult to say, "This is really awesome, but I can't do it." But I can take IB English at Arlington High School, you know, because I know I'm going to get something really neat from that. And so it's a wonderful program. I feel that we are challenged with offering it everywhere we're offering it because our students have so many choices. It's not the program itself, it's all the other choices they have, and the amount of time commitment, and the idea that you don't really start it until junior year.
Okay. And I don't want my line of questioning here to come across as I'm up here and like, you know, when we eventually have our meetings either with, you know, with Dr. Wertz or whoever the next superintendent is, that, you know, one of the things I'm doing in the background is like, "Hey, can we get rid of IB?" That's not it at all. I'm a huge fan of IB. I'm just, to your point of, there's so many opportunities and how to strategically deploy them, because it's not just at the high school. I am, I was, and still am a huge fan of the fact that we have one of the only IB early program schools in the area, really the state, at Crow Leadership Academy, and that program is progressing along. And so, you know, in a few years, we're going to have to face the question of, what do we do with those, you know, IB early program kids who are now going to junior high, and eventually they're going to want to go to high school? So I do see a long-term fix to the problem that you and I just discussed, which is, we eventually will get to a point where there are kids who are invested in IB before the junior year, you know, so what can we do to sustain it until we get there? So I don't want my questions to come off as that's what I'm thinking, because I would like to see this program survive. I just have questions based on, I know the historical numbers were higher, and they just seem a lot lower now.
Mr. Chapa, if I may, we are actually evaluating that very question about a couple of things. One, the relationship between the students that are taking courses in the IB program who are not actually seeking a diploma, those that are actually crossing the stage with an actual diploma, what's creating that? Whether it's spread too thin across multiple places, if there's a way to maximize a program by condensing it in tighter kind of cohorts so that kids have a more robust experience and support wrapped around them? And then the additional question around NYPD, because as you mentioned, the middle-years program is a bridge. We have a primary-years program at Crow Leadership Academy, and then we have the diploma program that starts in junior year, but the middle-years program actually bridges from junior high into the beginning years of high school, and there does create an opportunity for not only kids to have a, some continuity in terms of their programming, but also to generate interest for kids who may actually be interested in a diploma, but they don't necessarily have that complete pathway to define it for them and make choices when they're younger. So the team's actually been investigating that question probably for like the last year and a half. We're close to landing on something we probably want to recommend, but all the things you're discussing are meaningful parts of the discussion they're having.
Awesome. That's good to hear.
Wonderful.
I have two more questions.
Okay, I'm ready.
The next of which is, from the data, the way that it's presented, we've got like percent of, we've got a total enrollment of GT students for each campus, and then percent of GT students enrolled in various programs. Is there a gap between the, essentially where we have kids who've been identified as GT, but for whatever reason, there's a percentage of our GT identified kids that are not enrolling in advanced academics? Does that exist?
It does exist, but I think the number is very small, but it does exist. They have so many choices, though, and we identify in math, science, English, and social studies, but we also identify in creativity and leadership. And so a leadership person might not be going into an advanced course that would show up on the data that I shared today, but they might be in student council, or they might be a leader on the athletic field, or a leader on the band field, or something like that. And so there might not be a perfect match because we identify in all those areas as an alignment to academic courses, but even some of the other things that they can choose from are fulfilling their needs, and we let them choose how to fulfill their needs.
Great. It was just a question I had from the way that the data was presented, that there might be a gap there, and just trying to figure out what that is, if anything. The last thing I wanted to look at was the slides, the GT demographic comparison and the district-wide GT enrollment, you know, a 10-year comparison. If we could actually start with the one that says district-wide GP data, the grade levels from 13, 14 to 23, 24.
No. Whoops. This one?
The one before it. That one. So I just wanted to highlight this slide because I think it speaks so well of the work that y'all have been doing over the last 10 years. I remember when I got involved on Financial Futures 2011 with Mr. Will Banks, one of the things that we were looking at among the crazy mess of consultant sheets that we had was, well, what do we do about GT programming? Because it was frequently small classes, and then that led into, over the next couple of years, discussions of, well, how are we identifying our GT students? And I want to, you know, give credit to Mr. Will Banks, who as a parent at the time was very much pushing for us to take a deeper dive in how we educate our GT students. And what came out of that were things like doing universal screening in a way that we were not doing before. And I think this slide just shows how successful we've been at that, but also how much it was needed, because as well as we were doing with our GT students before that, I think we were missing, unintentionally missing some kids, and this shows we've got, we've got a way to, we've addressed that, and that we're improving on that front. And, you know, also, sort of the flip side of what we were talking about earlier, the more students we identify as GT, then there's more of a demand for our advanced academics classes, and it makes it, it provides more opportunities for students across the board, you know, because like you said before, for example, IB, we might have two diploma students at Lamar, but we actually have 42 students enrolled in IB classes, and so those non-diploma candidate students are still getting that opportunity, but it would exist because we've identified presumably more students and got them involved at a much younger age, and that builds out into high school. And then on the GT demographic comparison, another thing that I think, the next slide, I think speaks just as well and goes hand-in-hand with that is, is, you know, there's things you can do, I think, in the advanced academic space to throw more kids in there, and sometimes we're not really, we, in education historically, unintentionally so, throwing the same types of kids in there, and this slide shows that's not what we're doing. There have been, you know, well-documented in education, historically, large gaps in the types of students and the backgrounds of students who enroll in GT versus other classes, and, you know, there may be lots of reasons for that. But I think this slide shows that at least in this district, we have expanded our advanced academic programming and identifying our students with a real focus on equity, and equity in the best sense of the word, you know, finding the kids who might otherwise be overlooked, but who are gifted and have the ability to succeed in those classes, and ensuring we get them in there, and the fact that our numbers line up so closely with the demographics of our district mean that we're doing it in a very fair and equitable way, and I'm very proud of that as a trustee. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and as Mr. Chapa alluded to, I want to thank you, Dr. Zeski, because I've been waiting eagerly for this presentation for 12 years. So, and it is amazing, and I thank you, Mr. Chapa, for pointing out this slide that's currently up. That was the thing that I think struck me the most from this presentation, is that we are very equitable in our approach, and, you know, I know there are even podcasts about how GT can be viewed as elitist, and as you pointed out, those are myths, especially here in AISD. The important thing is that we're serving students who need to be served. And as a parent whose son was not served for so long, who's quite successful now despite that, I'm so glad to see the numbers that we're seeing, especially identifying the students that we're seeing. But I'm curious, you know, how long is it? It's right before COVID when the GT program at the elementary grades was fully rolled out, correct? out, correct?
I think when COVID, when COVID occurred, we, they were in the fourth and fifth grade, I think, maybe from the redesign.
Almost fully rolled out.
So they were almost fully rolled out.
Yeah. So since then, have we done any surveys, or what have we done to measure the success of how well we're serving those students and the parent satisfaction with the program? Have we done any surveys or any other process measures to try to quantify that?
There's some, then some focus groups that we did last spring, no. Not.
Surveys or other measures on how well we're serving the students?
So specifically surveying the parents of gifted students?
Right. Both quantitative and qualitative.
Yeah, maybe something we can consider, too, as we do think about our parent survey. We ask in our survey, of course, like what schools you come from. We don't necessarily ask which program your student participates in. That's a good idea to help us.
Yeah, no, as a longtime advocate of this program, it would pain me if we, you know, if we're not maximizing the effectiveness, we're serving them well. I have no doubt that we're serving them well, but I would love to see just how well we're serving those students and how well received it is for the parents of those students so we could conduct a survey specifically to those parents being served in this program. I think that would be insightful to know that we are getting the maximum bang for the buck and that we are really, really affecting students' lives for the better. The other thing that I want to commend you on is, like Mr. Chapa, I love the fact that we give students choices. I mean, every student's different. My daughter was much different than my son, but she had interests as well. And she was exposed to the IB concept when she attended school in Buenos Aires as a junior high student. And she came back excited that it was offered at Lamar at our home campus. Now, for other medical reasons, she wasn't able to complete it and wasn't one of the IB graduates in that program. But I've been concerned, as Mr. Chapa, of why the numbers aren't low. And, you know, I've always thought that the plan was to start at the elementary, get them young, kind of like our preschool marketing strategy, and get them into the program. And then the thing, Dr. Wertz, that you mentioned is we're missing that gap there. And as you were attesting to, they, starting them as a junior and trying to sell it on the parents is really too late. It's a tough sell. I sat through those parent orientation meetings, and I can tell you, it was, I was more confused coming out about what IB meant and what it was going to offer my daughter at that high school level. But even knowing what I knew about it from living in the American School, my daughter attending the American School in Buenos Aires. But I think that, you know, you're right, we need that middle piece to bridge from middle school through that junior year of high school. Because the fact that we don't, I mean, the fact that they kind of get involved in everything that's offered freshman and sophomore year and the strict requirements for junior and senior year, it's not an option for most students at that point. So I'd be interested to continue to look, but we have to be good stewards of taxpayer money. We can't provide everything under the sun. And if, you know, we would have to take it through, look at it 360 degrees from all angles, both financially and where it complements our offerings in advanced academics. But I, like Mr. Chapa, I'm a big fan of IB. I really think it's a great program. If we could provide it with fidelity and get students interested young and they can follow through, not unlike what we're doing with our dual language and fine arts. The other, I have one more question. But seeing how I can't find it, and Mr. Chapa pointed out, oh, I don't remember what it was. So if you could go back to the line graph, and I'll try to remember what my question was, on the enrollment. There we go. So if you look at elementary, it seemed like during COVID, elementary was affected more during the COVID years, but yet junior high accelerated. Why the disparity between, or the dichotomy between the acceleration we see in the junior high years through the COVID, in the junior high grades during the COVID years versus what we see at the elementary?
Really, we weren't identifying anybody in junior high during that time. That's a leftover from over identification earlier on in the program before the redesign. We had some pockets, some campuses where there was some over identification, and some where there was some under identification before the redesign. So that's kind of the higher junior high numbers is holdover from that. And because there really were some challenges on face-to-face meetings during school closures, that's why there was a little dip in elementary. We tried to come back and make sure we didn't miss anybody after the fact, after we had our school closures for COVID. So the junior high numbers aren't new identifications during that time period. They're held over from earlier, earlier over identification on some campuses and not enough identification on others.
Okay. All right. Dr. Zesky, again, thank you and your staff. I mentioned it before when this was being rolled out, when I was on Financial Futures and also when I was first on the board. And we were getting an update from Dr. Wertz back then. I think we've created a top-notch GT program at the elementary level, and the fact that we have so many great offerings. I wanted to ask you more about on-ramps, but it's pretty self-explanatory, and I'd like to find out more offline about the differentiation between that and IB and being able to offer the dual credit, I think is key, and I'd like to see that grow as well. But again, thank you and your staff. And then I'll reiterate that as a board, I would love for us to commit, you know, commission a survey and provide that feedback and have you guys come back and let us know just how well we are serving those students.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Zesky. And I just wanted to very briefly thank you and acknowledge Dr. Horton and Ms. Gresham as well. Y'all are so passionate about this, and I wanted, I echo everything that's been said, and great questions have been asked tonight, but I just wanted to add one more thing. I wanted to acknowledge and thank our GT lead teachers. They work so hard, and they are truly singletons on their campuses, but they go out of their way during their own time, and they gravitate toward each other and take the initiative to network with colleagues around the district so they can continuously improve. They lead the Texas Performance Standards Project for their students, which is very self-led and very challenging even for our GT students. They facilitate a wonderful GT showcase for our parents to join every year on their individual campuses. Not to mention, they foster a growth mindset in their students, and they hold such a passion for what they do. And I have to acknowledge Ms. Gresham because I think that that's something you foster with your leadership, and you've been in your role for how long now?
Eleven years.
Eleven years? And I just, I have really seen, you know, that have a domino effect, and I just, I know that's making an awesome impact for students. And that's what I especially am happy about. So thank the whole team for all you do, especially our teachers, whether it's AVID, IB, GT lead teachers. It takes a village, but I love what we're doing for our students, and we see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you so much for the information. I will be very brief in complete congruency with everything that's been said. I remember sitting on the dais when Dr. Wertz first pitched this to the board. Remember the FFC and the Big Rocks, and this was one of the rocks. And when you did that, that many years ago, I remember just being so excited about the potential. My son was homeschooled, which I think is no surprise to many for his kindergarten year. We didn't think we could mess him up that bad. And that's a whole different story. But he ended up going from kindergarten into second grade because the materials, it just, it wasn't there. We didn't have this GT kind of program. And he's wonderful, done great, but I was, like Mr. Will Banks, such an advocate. We've got to, we've got to create opportunities for our students. And so that night when you gave that presentation, I was just so overjoyed. And the cluster grouping, you look at the numbers from then to now, it's just phenomenal, the growth. So, yeah, talking about IB and what we need to do about that and creating that bridge, looking very forward to that coming forward. My daughter was an IB graduate. And so we're very, very much all in to these different offerings. Choice, as I said, it's a, it's a lot of choice. It's a good problem to have, and we just have to navigate it a little bit more. So I definitely look forward to the information going forward. Parent satisfaction, that's great. Student satisfaction, that's great. The correlation of where these opportunities are taking kids, the thing for us has always been creating the opportunities and, more importantly, creating the access to the opportunities. And IB specifically, that was the decision when we were faced with those budget cuts years ago, Mr. Chapa referred to, was specifically looking at, do we consolidate IB or not? And at the time, it was a significant access point to go through that expense, to endure that expense, so that those students could have that opportunity and the access to it at those different high schools. Maybe that will continue, maybe not. Look forward to what that information is coming back. But I do know that as a board, we are, we are not afraid to stand in the gap. This district has stuck firm with, at the high school level, the block schedule, which doesn't hardly exist anywhere. Why? Because of money. And we've figured it out. And things like IB and all of the opportunities our students have, I firmly believe wouldn't be possible if we didn't make that kind of investment. So I thank this board for everything that you do, that we do, to ensure that those opportunities exist. So I'm just bragging on you. I'm so happy to see, really, the numbers from where we started to now. And I remember that night and you talking about, Dr. Wertz, talking about the rollout of the elementary program. And I distinctly remember several of us being concerned about what teachers would want to take on that load, and they'd feel like, oh, we're just getting one more thing dumped on us. And you look at Ms. Gresham out there and taking the bull by the horns and running with it, and so much great things happening as a result in this district. It's, we do everything to meet the needs everywhere, and this is wonderful. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Dr. Wertz, did you want to add something?
In the spirit of repetitiveness, in terms of like, the risk of being repetitive is what I actually mean, is that I just want to acknowledge Amy, because we, she is our GT specialist, and so much of what we're talking about tonight is the fruit of her labor. She pours hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours every year into the GT teachers, designing the professional learning. And I remember back in the day, sitting around the round table in my office and all of us thinking and ideating around what this could look like. And you put so much of this to life, really, and refined it, and refined it, and refined it. So thank you to Dr. Zesky and Dr. Horton, and I just really want to recognize you, Amy, because a lot of the things the kids are experiencing are because of the way you poured into it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Thank you, Dr. Zesky and your team for providing such awesome opportunities for our students. We appreciate it, and I know they do, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have, yes, ma'am, we have seven registered.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I will start with William DeKine. Welcome, Mr. DeKine. You will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the Board of Trustees. As you know, I'm the father of three girls that attend schools in the AISD. Two of my daughters are fifth graders, and my oldest is a freshman at Arlington High School. Tonight, I'm here to advocate on behalf of all girls in AISD. A study conducted in 2021 indicated that one in four students who menstruate experienced the lack of access to safe and hygienic menstrual products. We know that without period products, these students are more likely to miss school. A study conducted in 2019 showed that four in five teens reported either having missed class time or knew a classmate who missed class time because they did not have access to period products. I asked my oldest daughter if period products were available at Arlington High School. She said, yes, you can get them from the nurse's office, but in order to do that, you've got to get permission from your teacher to have a hall pass and then go to the nurse's office, and then there's usually a long line, five to 10 people. And once you finally have one, you've got to go to the restroom to use it and then go back to class. That's a lot of time out of the classroom to take care of something that could be made readily available at the point of use, the girls' restroom. I asked my daughter what happens to students that start their period when they're not at school or they don't have access to period products? She said some of them just don't go to school. So we're potentially talking about several scenarios of need. This past weekend, my daughter met with a senior from Martin High School, working on raising awareness of the same issue. They started a petition on Tuesday to gain student signatures to bring awareness to our Board of Trustees. Over the past 36 hours, they've collected over 650 signatures in person and over 100 signatures online. They're learning that some schools have student organizations that support these efforts, but not many do, especially at the junior high and elementary school levels. I'm asking the Board of Trustees to look at standing up a committee or team to look into this issue. Look at what current practices are in place across the district, and look at what can be done to ensure students have access they need to these products. There are lots of groups willing to partner with our district, and ways could be developed to make the sustainable effort. I'd like to yield the remainder of my time, which is about a minute, to Trin Luong, who is that senior from Martin High School. I've preemptively checked with your council and gotten the opinion that it is up to you if I can pass that time off. That's your decision. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeKine. We'll next call Trin Luong. Welcome, Ms. Luong. You will have your three minutes, and one minute for Mr. DeKine.
May I present y'all with all the petitions?
We give to our district.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Trin Luong, a senior at the STEM Academy at Martin High School. Ever since this, ever since this spring, I've been appointed the chief executive of the Formula Project, a women empowerment nonprofit that focuses on sourcing period products for economically disadvantaged girls and women. Since my appointment, I've expanded it to seven different high schools across Texas, with two of the clubs being in AISD high schools. While the position has filled me with great joy, I've also come to understand how many girls get ostracized daily and become the punchline of cool jokes, all due to period poverty and often overlooked health crisis. With hopes of addressing this humanitarian issue, I want to provide a proposal for free menstrual products, notably pads, in the girls' restrooms. I've handed detailed copies of the proposal to Mrs. Forsberg prior to this meeting. While this has yet to be done in AISD, this service is common throughout many of Texas' schools and other states. Just last year, two girls from Fort Worth ISD submitted a successful proposal of $60,000 for free menstrual products for all their high schools and middle schools totaling 42 campuses. Furthermore, the University of Arlington provides free menstrual products in the restrooms to 41,000 students. For as long as I've been an AISD student, this district has always prided itself for innovations and pushing for equity among their students. This is just another opportunity to This is just another opportunity to do just that. As I'm calculating how many dollar signs this proposal entails, I was pleasantly surprised that providing this human right was fairly affordable. The needed dispensers for these products range as low as $75, and for a pack of over 500 pads, it will only cost the district $54. As of September 1st, Texas became the 25th state to no longer tax period products. As you all can see, allocating just a small sum of money can dramatically change girls' lives and their education. Plus, with grants such as the Kimberly-Clark Foundation available, reductions can be easily done, such as placing business logos in AISD dispensers, and negotiating fair terms for bulk menstrual hygiene, given the sheer amounts of students in AISD. This proposal doesn't even have to start as big as revamping all 11 campuses. Rather, I suggest starting with implementing free products in Title I schools, targeting the students who need it most. Even though I've gone through privilege of leading many student leaders in providing menstrual care, I'd also been a little girl that faced difficult scenarios not getting what she needed. That scare little girl still resides within me. But now she stands before you with a found voice that not only fights for her right, but for over, but for the rights of over 600 people that signed her petition forms. And who knows? Maybe the next girl who, that will be going through a scare is your own wife, daughter, or even granddaughter. As every girl has gone through this challenge, I want to leave you all with one of your own. On December 9th, I'll be emailing you a follow-up with, I'll be emailing a follow-up with each and every one of you. Please respond to the email with any further steps I may take to make this happen. At the end of the day, progress demands radical compassion. Thank you for your time, and have a good rest of your night.
Ms., Ms. Luong, if you'll speak with Dr. Hill. Make contact with Dr. Hill, and we'll see what, what we can do. Thank you so much. My next call, Ms. Kimberly Lloyd. Good evening, Ms. Lloyd.
Good evening.
You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, and the remaining trustees of the board. My name is Kim Lloyd, and I'm here to discuss publicly a matter that I've been trying to get resolved privately since September the 13th. At the September trustee talks, it was communicated to a parent there that the students at Wemish World Language Academy would matriculate after sixth grade to Shackelford Junior High. For many of us day-one parents, this was the first time that we had ever heard this. Because when we were presented the proposal to attend Wemish back in 2019, it was told that our kids would have the same pathway as the other dual-language academies in the district. On January, on June 12th, 2018, Dr. Wertz sat before three of you in this same room and mentioned, and mentioned that, he mentioned that same thing. He mentioned that same pathway. And I have asked in each of the correspondences that I have sent to you, the three emails, and the phone call that I've had, two things. That you honor what was told to us when we signed on that day, that our students will matriculate to the new dual-language middle school, then high school, and that if you're not going to honor that, have the decency to tell us why, and make sure it comes from the district and the trustees, as our current school administration has no say in this matter, and did not make the initial decisions. Our dual-language students deserve to be treated like the other dual-language academies, and not be told we have to test in, or have an art ability, considering the issues the district allowed to occur three years before Dr. Kaye arrived. Whatever decision is made, needs to be communicated to all parents, and not in these one-off conversations that keep occurring. And I also want to address a couple of things that I keep hearing, whether it's from a presentation, whether it's from other parents' conversations with various people within the district. Capacity at gun. There are not capacity issues at gun. There may be program design issues that have not been considered in the five years that our school has been, been enacted, but there are not capacity issues. And the other thing that keeps getting emphasized is that gun is a dual-language fine arts. The arts at gun apply to every student, whether they are from an academy or a student that is coming in from that zoned area. But again, this communication and decision needs to be made, and it needs to be communicated to all parents at Wemish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. I now call Sidney Krosko. Good evening, Mr. Krosko.
Good evening.
You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sidney Krosko. I have two girls enrolled at Wemish World Language Academy. Parents are to be full partners with educators in the education of their children. This is what the Texas Education Code states as Objective One in Public Education. We parents, all of us here, we made the decision to send our children to this dual-language campus rather than other academies with the promise of the board that they would be allowed to continue their advanced language studies at gun without the requirement of an application or placement examination. The school district has benefited from our class of children, whose work in the dual-language program has brought in additional funding to the district through foreign languages, as well as the parents who've raised the involvement on campus. That's aside from academic, increasing the epidemic performance on site. Objective Two states that students are to be encouraged and challenged to meet their full educational potential. And now, as this promise is nearing the payback period for the students, it seems like the district is not intent, or, sorry, is intent on denying the students their rightful dues for their efforts. These children have spent years learning not just two languages, but more than three because of their deep cultural immersion provided to them at Wemish. As a parent, I'm grateful for all the district has done. I'm grateful that you are an innovation district, and you encourage academies like this to exist. I grew up with Spanish as my first language, but I never received formal cultural written education in it. I, I can't imagine where these kids could end up with their, their beginning of their education. My third grader can likely spell in Spanish better than I ever will, and intuitively knows when to use "usted" rather than "tu" in, in, in language, in speaking. And my kindergartner sings French songs daily and has a better grasp of corrective, of correct possessive adjectives than they do than after two years of study. And you might guess I'm interested in language. Aside from these, I've studied Japanese in high school, but that all disappeared wither to weight of nothing because I didn't keep up with it. And we are worried that if our children are not allowed to continue in dual-language study, the way that they have been with cultural immersion, that they are going to lose it. And any benefit in this is not going to bear fruit. If our children are challenged and encouraged these additional next years, there's only one way that they can do that, and we believe that it is at gun. Understandably, the district can use the workaround in code to allow our students to attend once they've applied and have been awarded acceptance. In, in which case, we parents would like to request the assignment or transfer of our students from Shackelford to gun as allowed in Chapter 25 of Chaplain B. Either the board will either grant us this request or give us a reasonable bias for denying this request, which we believe has already been approved by the same body. However, doing so is more than pulling up the rug from under us. It feels like an insult, and would do much to remove any gratitude and encouragement we've felt, we've received here at AISD over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I now call Mr. Richard Weber. Welcome, Mr. Weber. You'll have three minutes.
Hello. All right. The subject I had written on my form was following the rules. And I'm still going to talk upon that, but I want to thank you for increasing speaking time from two to three minutes. I mean, those last couple of speakers, it would have been impossible to explain the situation, the problem, and the solution in two minutes. It just proves the point. So, I was going to start out with following the rules. If you look at your own handbook, it actually says five minutes. In your own handbook, it says five minutes. Personally, I think three minutes is good. If the handbook changes to three minutes, that's fine with me. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But the two minutes, it's got to go. And I, again, thank you very much for that. Also, in the handbook, it doesn't say anything about three o'clock registration time. Now, I mean, this is the first you're hearing this from me, but I strongly dislike the 3:00 p.m. registration time. So, I mean, this would have been the third time I was complaining about the two-minute thing, but, yeah, first time I want to complain about the three-minute registration, 3:00 p.m. minute registration time. Now, also, following the rules is Toma, Texas Open Meetings Act. When you all have your little subcommittees, you don't post them anywhere. The public's not invited. Well, when you actually read the handbook put out by the Texas AG, and you go to the page about these little subcommittee meetings, in the verbiage, it says they don't have to be posted. But when you actually look at the footnotes, the legal opinions from the past, it says they don't have to be posted if the item is not just rubber-stamped. And I can come up with quite a few examples where it sure seemed like to me it was rubber-stamped. So, I mean, maybe we need to get an opinion on what rubber stamp is. But in, in my opinion, those meetings should be posted and open to the public. And I hope you continue this opened transparency that you've started with the three minutes, and continue working on transparency. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And I believe Annie Crump is going to be virtual? She has not logged on. All right. We'll, we'll come back to her. Mary Beth Gordon. Welcome, Ms. Gordon. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Good evening, President Fowler, trustees, Dr. Wertz. I'd like to yield my time for one minute. I happen to have a student from Gun reach out to me and ask if she could speak, but she was in school, and she didn't realize she had to register by 3:00 p.m. So, it's at your discretion, but she has something to say, and I'd like her to be able to speak.
That's fine. Thank you.
Bonjour les membres de l'administration. Je m'appelle Charlotte. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Wemish World Language Academy students at Gun Junior High, and to advocate for my sisters who attend WWLA in the French track, and who deserve the education they were promised by AISD, a K through 12 dual-language education in French. I am so thankful to be at Gun, for my amazing teachers, and for the opportunities I've received. Last year, I was honored to represent Gun Junior High at the junior-based competition, where I earned a platinum medal in visual arts, the highest award for a junior-high art student. And I was proudly chosen to represent our stu, our school this year at the TASA, TASB convention in Dallas. I was representing not only my current art teacher from Gun, Ms. Gulick, but also my art teacher from Wemish, Ms. Hudson, who gave me a strong foundation to build on. Visual arts isn't the only opportunity I was given at Wemish, though. I also received exemplary instructions in orchestra from Ms. Hooper, which has helped me excel in orchestra at Gun. I have taken everything I've learned from my French Flesch class with Monsieur Sans, and excelled in French one at Gun with Madame Weinberg this year. My love for learning foreign languages has its foundation at WWLA, and I hope to continue French into my university years and beyond. It saddens me to think that this opportunity might be taken from my younger sisters, who have been learning French longer than I have, since they were four and six years old. How would you feel if that happened to your child? I am not naive to the fact that some people think that Wemish students don't belong at Gun Junior High. If that were true, then why were three of the Students of the Month last year representing Wemish World Language Academy? Myself, Marilyn Tovar, and Jacqueline Rojas. Wemish students are valuable members of avid choir, athletics, theater, orchestra, advanced art classes, and advanced academics across the board. And we have the right to be there, and so do our younger siblings and all the students from Wemish World Language Academy. The district has made a commitment to the students in the French program. Shouldn't every student feel valued? Isn't that what we're trying to do here at AISD? Every student in AISD matters. Merci beaucoup, and thank you for your consideration.
So, good evening. It's hard to follow that, but I thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Beth Gordon, and as all of you, as all of you know from my emails, I'm a proud mom of three Wemish World Language Wolves. As you are all, all in the French track, I'm here to publicly speak and make the community aware of the current concern as to where WWLA students will be attending junior high and high school. Back in January 2019, I attended not one, but two informational meetings about WWLA and what it was going to offer. During the PowerPoint presentation, we were told our children would be triliterate by the time they graduated sixth grade, and that they would be testing out of French or Spanish I and II, which means that they will have met their language credits for high school. We were told that our students would attend Gun Junior High, and the program would follow through Arlington, through high school, through at Arlington High School. Somehow, during the first few years, we were told that they were no longer sure that we would attend Gun and Arlington High, and that the final decision would be made when my, when the first class, which happens to be my son, who is now, was in fourth grade, he is now in fifth grade, and we still have not been given a decision. I attended the trustee's talk in September, and a parent who had no children at WWLA has mentioned that in one of the board meetings, it had been brought up that WWLA's enrollment is low. Mr. Willbanks commented on the enrollment portion, and I spoke up, and I announced, I mentioned a big portion why WWLA is not growing is because it has not been formally announced where WWLA students will be attending junior high and high school. Dr. Buell then stated that WWLA will be attending Shackelford and Lamar. Parents were taken back by that response, not only because we had been told Gun and Arlington High School, but also because we have not heard of any dual-language programs in Shaq and Lamar, and that Gun was already a dual-language school, and we're working on building Arlington High School as the dual-language high school. I am also, constantly, Wemish is separated from Corian Jones. We have a pre-K. I'll comment on that in a minute. I just want to say, I also, I also am the parent that went to NBC when the district tried to cancel the French program the first year. I try to attend as many informational, parent informational nights as possible to let people know the outcome, and that I am extremely happy with WWLA. Can't speak highly enough about that school. At the October 19th board meeting, trustee Chappa stated that WWLA is only a K through 6 program. I'd like to note that, that it needs to be corrected. WWLA, in fact, starts at pre-K 4 and goes through 6, 6th. Secondly, none of us parents that attended the original meeting were told it was just a pre-K through 6th program. We were told that we would continue through Gun and Arlington High. We were told that it takes five to seven years to develop this language. Why would we spend these years developing this language, just to no longer continue on? We were told that we have triliterate students, and that would be able to go and live in that country. Some of you have students in these specialized programs. I could go on and on. I know it was my time. But think about, would you have put your child in a program from pre-K through 6th grade, just to lose that language after 6th grade? just to lose that language after sixth grade?[1042.74][1042.74](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Forsberg, do we have Annie Crump virtually?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It is now time for our superintendent's report. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since the last superintendent's report at our last meeting. And I want to start with a thanks to three of our staff members: Segin, golf coach, Ruston Lawrence; Lamar, golf coach, Gary Webb; and Lamar, athletic trainer, Bryant Greis. All three played really important roles in saving the lives of two student athletes. Lawrence and Webb performed CPR and used the AED device on a Segin golfer who collapsed on the golf course, and the student is now recovering. Greis performed CPR and used AED on an Irving Nimitz basketball player who was visiting, and that individual collapsed on the basketball court. That student is also recovering. And we actually received a letter of gratitude from the superintendent in Irving ISD. So, thank you to all three of these individuals for all their heroic efforts. Also, our CVPA, our Center for Visual Performing Arts, or Dr. Marcelo Covasso's Center for Visual Performing Arts students, took center stage at the Dallas Cowboys game last week as their artwork was on display when the Cowboys honored Hall of Famer DeMarcus Ware for his induction to the Pro Football Hall of Fame. The students who created an art piece in honor of Ware, you can see him staring at it. What he's actually looking at in this picture are the words of his speech. The students actually put it on the, on the, on the piece. And that work, as well as students, they made it to the November 30th game as well as guests of the Cowboys. And the artwork is made of recycled products in, which is where the Pepsi cans kind of were included. And they also included Ware's Hall of Fame induction speech, which you can see on the, on the rotating portion of the piece. So, I was there that day, and the kids were very excited, and you should have seen their faces when he walked in. They were not expecting that. And as many of you know, the district hosted its first Toys for Tots drive-through event at the CVPA last week, and it was a huge success. There was great support. We filled 25 boxes of toys as well as nearly 100 bikes that will be distributed to children all across the Arlington area. The event was made successful by the work of the Arlington ISD community. Students performed, and they collected donations. There were actually receptacles at each of the schools to collect donations. And we also had several other different community organizations come out and support the event. So, I just can't wait to see how this gets expanded in future years. And finally, thanks to the YMCA and the Big 12, our after-school students at Butler Elementary got a special treat last week. Big 12 student athletes from across the country as well as WWE stars Rochette and Raquel Rodriguez visited with more than 60 of our students, and they played games and worked with them on crafts. It was a great experience for all the students there at Butler. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with reports? Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just wanted to report on a couple of things. There was many of us that were at Bryan Elementary's 30th anniversary, and I just wanted to extend our, my gratitude for that school, what they've done, Margie Bryant, and the culture that they have consistently elicited for the entire 30 years. It is really a special, special elementary school, and it was just a great night to be there and experience that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Also, through the Pope Dads Club, our alumni group that still is pretty active with Pope Elementary. I don't know if Spence has anything to show. There we go. So, we got together. You may or may not know, the principal, Sina Kilgore, is a principal of Pope Elementary for 25 years. I believe that is a record in the district for one principal at one school for that tenure. And so, we, she is the preeminent Cowboys fan, not fair weather whatsoever. And so, we gave her this jersey that you're seeing on the screen with 25 on it to denote her 25 years of excellence in what she instills in those children and those families, that she's affected literally thousands and thousands over the years. So, I just wanted to put that shout out there. She was blown away, and I'm sure she's wearing that all the time.
That she is.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, President Fowler. Only one report. Mr. Will Banks requested that staff consider a parent survey for gifted and talented program effectiveness, and that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. We now come to something that makes me both happy and sad tonight. We are bidding farewell to a remarkable person who has served our school district with dedication, integrity, and a never-ending positive attitude. Tim Edwards, our internal auditor, will be retiring from his position, and we want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your contributions. Tim, your tenure with us has been nothing short of exceptional. Your eye for detail, a commitment to accuracy, and unparalleled work ethic. We will miss you for all of these reasons, but also your sense of humor. Thank you for being a mentor and a guide and a friend to so many of us. And on a personal note, my very first year of serving on the board, I had the privilege of being on your audit committee. You always answered my many, many questions, and you were always patient and kind and such a good friend to me. We will miss you, but we don't want you to leave empty-handed. On behalf of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, we want to present you with the coveted Crystal Waterford Bowl to mark this exciting occasion. We're sad, but we know you're happy and you're ready to retire in Phase Two of your life. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, please accept this as a heartfelt gift for all of your dedication to this district. You have been an awesome employee and friend to so many people, and please know that you're going to be missed a lot.
Thank you, President Fowler and members of the board. I am humbled with this recognition. Just a couple of items. First, the support from the board has always just been stellar. I couldn't ask for a better group to work for. I've had experience with university system, with Fortune 500 Corporation, with state senator, and nowhere have I been in an environment that was as great as this one. The tone at the top that this board has established and management has established is, it's amazing. And I do speak that from experience. And beyond that, I also, I'm compelled to give credit for any successes that the internal audit function has achieved through the staff. Alexis Palacios, Emily R. Diddy, Chris Denman, and Charlie Smith all deserve credit. And they're going to be here when I'm gone, and I'm 100% confident that their stellar performance will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, sir. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Edwards, I just wanted to say thank you for making our internal audit department so much better than when you found it. As, as you know, I was part of the crew that brought you in. And the, the capacity that you've built, you've raised the professionalism of that department to a level that it was never at. It's completely attributed to you. You demonstrate your character so well by putting all those props to your staff, and that's certainly deserved, but it also is, cannot be not mentioned that it's from the leadership that they had as well. You've made that department better. The district is a better place as a result of your tenure here. And your dedication is, is really second to none, the time that you have put into this through thick and thin. And there was, there were some pretty thick times there. And I commend you for being able to continue on. I thank God for your ability to be on this earth to be able to come back after things that you went through. And the entire time, your focus still was, what can I do to make sure that everything is happening the way it's supposed to be in Arlington ISD? So, thank you for everything. We are going to miss you. Big shoes to fill. You have left us in good hands with, with the staff and look forward to hearing from you from time to time with, I'm sure, a very big retirement smile. That's all I ever see with people that retire.[1763.81][1763.81](LAUGHTER) So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. And with that, it is 9:46, and we are adjourned.[1775.54][1775.54](MUSIC)